Education of the Morgan Hill Unified School District. Sorry, been up since five this morning, so I hope you'll forgive any bleh. Okay. I believe student board member Faruki will lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll continue with introductions. Hello again, I'm John Horner, Board President and Trustee to my right.
Veronica Andrade, trustee.
Sarah Northrup Gaddis, trustee.
Good evening.
Rebecca Munson, trustee.
Student board member Marion Faruki.
Shh.
Good evening, Nancy Altman, trustee.
Claudia.
Good evening, Claudia Estrada, Executive Assistant.
Good evening, Carmen Garcia, Superintendent. I would like to address our Spanish-speaking community. Miembros de la comunidad de habla hispana tenemos traducción simultánea. Por favor, hagan click en el icono del mundo debajo de la pantalla. Hagan click en el icono del mundo debajo de la pantalla. Muchas gracias por estar con nosotros.
Buenas noches. Good evening, Diana Jimenez, Assistant Superintendent of Educational Services.
Good evening, Cora Chang, Assistant Superintendent of Business.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Diana Taveras, Assistant Superintendent of Human Resources.
Thank you all, and thank you, all of our audience, for being in the room and/or on Zoom. We greatly appreciate it. Move on to adoption of the agenda. Do we have a motion to adopt the agenda? Thank you, trustee Munson. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, trustee Altman. All in favor? Oh, sorry, student board member Faruki.
Aye.
Others, please say aye.
Aye.
Any abstentions or declarations? No, seeing none, that carries by unanimous of those present. Closed session action report. There are no items to report out of closed session. So now we move on to recognitions and presentations, the most exciting part. Superintendent Dr. Garcia will introduce Morgan Hill Federation Teachers President Jim Levis for recognition of the 2025 Site Teacher of the Year and District Teacher of the Year.
Parida.
All right, well, good evening and thank you. This evening, I'm honored to be able to present to you the Morgan Hill Federation Teachers of the Year. Each year, Morgan Hill Federation members at each site, and of course, our non-specific site members, choose one member to honor as their particular Site Teacher of the Year. From that group, the Morgan Hill Federation of Teachers Executive Council chooses one of the Site Teachers of the Year as the District Teacher of the Year, and then represents the district at the county level. So tonight, I'm honored to tell you a little bit about each one of them, and then we appreciate your honoring them this evening. All right, so I'll be reading a little bit on each one of them. Our first Teacher of the Year is Monica Keener from Barrett Elementary School. Monica has put her heart and soul into her class this year, and it hasn't been easy. She continues to smile every day and give her 100% to her students. In addition, her dedication and work with the leadership group has been outstanding this school year, incorporating so many school activities that have really enriched our community. She has put in countless hours of time putting on assemblies, decorating teachers' doors, and creating spirit competitions. The leadership team has brought much joy and purpose to Barrett this year. She is a passionate teacher who always gives her best and puts in maximum effort. She is caring, thoughtful, and always mindful of her students' needs. Her efforts are truly commendable. Congratulations to Monica Keener, Barrett Elementary School Teacher of the Year. If they're here, would you like them to come up now or at the end? So if you are here, Monica's not. Oh, there was Monica. I'm sorry, Monica. As I speak, as I give the information on you, if you're here, please, you know, feel free to stand up, and you will be given an acknowledgement by President Horner.
Wonderful job. Thank you so much. Congratulations.
I'll be able to picture at the end.
Would you like to do individual pictures or all at the end? It's up to you.
We can do one, Greg, and everybody at the end. Is that okay?
Yeah.
Okay. So at the end, then, we'll gather everyone up to the front, and we'll get a group picture. Sandy Hillsland is our El Toro Health Sciences Teacher of the Year. Sandy's colleagues are quick to praise her unwavering dedication, generosity, and kindness. From attending every home and school club event and staying until the last bit of cleanup is done, to assisting with dismal daily, with dismal daily work despite not having yard duty. Sorry about that. Ah, dismissal. Didn't work in the sentence. I apologize. Sorry, Sandy. Don't have the same thing in middle school. With dismissal daily, despite not having yard duty. Thank you, Sandy. Sandy goes above and beyond to ensure everything runs smoothly and that students feel safe and supported. Her positive attitude and caring nature may carry a constant source of comfort and guidance to everyone around her, whether through offering a sympathetic ear or giving a student a break when needed. Her incredible ability to integrate art across all subjects in a way that makes math, science, and language arts more alive for their students truly sets her apart. She has earned this recognition through her tireless efforts to make learning not only educational but meaningful and fun for all. Congratulations, Sandy Hillsland, El Toro Sciences Academy. Work better on this one. Okay. Cristiana Common from Los Piseos Elementary School is their Teacher of the Year. Cristiana embodies the true calling of an MHUSD teacher for both her students and her fellow educators. She builds a wonderful classroom community that meets the needs of all students in a way that is evidenced by their strong academic growth. Her willingness to be a learner herself makes her the perfect person to go to when any teacher on campus needs good ideas for their classrooms. Her passion for teaching and learning shines through with her use of GLAD strategies to support language learning for her emerging bilinguals and all of her second graders. And this year, she was part of the P3 Math Team. Cristiana is not only a leader for her students but a leader for her colleagues as well. Her doors are always open for observations, advice giving, and she is a good listener. We are so lucky to have her. Congratulations, Cristiana Common, Los Piseos Elementary School. Our next Teacher of the Year is Renee Devillas from Nordstrom Elementary School. Renee is a dedicated, hard-working, and caring teacher who goes above and beyond. Her willingness to step up as our Site Union Representative has greatly benefited our community. Her expertise in using technology to enhance instruction is invaluable. She has been instrumental in helping us align our gradebook to essential standards, ensuring that our grading practices are clear, consistent, and meaningful. Beyond that, she is always willing to step in and troubleshoot problems, offering thoughtful solutions and support whenever challenges arise. Her patience, expertise, and collaborative spirit make a significant impact on our team, and her commitment to excellence in education is truly inspiring. Renee is more than deserving of this recognition. Congratulations, Renee Devillas, Nordstrom Elementary. Paradise Valley Engineering Academy Teacher of the Year is Rachel Wheatley. Rachel has been an outstanding teacher since day one. Every year, she is a shining star at PVE. This year in particular, she has taken on a class with multiple severe behavioral challenges. She has worked diligently, collaboratively, and with great patience and fidelity to improve student behavior and provide the needed interventions and documentation to get students the services that they need. She looks at student needs and meets them exactly where they are to improve their abilities. Rachel has been a leader at our site to implement new phonics instruction and use research-based strategies to improve student learning. She is well-respected and highly regarded at our school and does it all with a great sense of humor. Congratulations, Rachel Wheatley, Paradise Valley Engineering Academy. Chris Helm is the PA Walsh Steam Academy Teacher of the Year. Chris has been a dedicated educator at PA Walsh Steam Academy for the past 10 years. He's earned the admiration of both colleagues and students through his calm demeanor, compassionate teaching, and unwavering commitment to his school community. He creates a safe and inclusive learning environment where students feel valued and supported. Known for his leadership, collaboration, and willingness to take on challenging tasks, Chris consistently goes above and beyond, whether it's supporting his peers, handling combo classes, or staying late for students in need. His thoughtful reflections and positive outlook inspire those around him, making him not only an exceptional teacher but also a cherished colleague. Congratulations to Chris Helm, PA Walsh Steam Academy. Denise Purvis is the Jackson Academy of Math and Music Teacher of the Year, and a crowd favorite. Denise consistently goes and beyond for all students, treating each one with open arms and a warm heart. As the speech therapist, she has taken on enormous student loan, and enormous student lo- load, not loan, student loan with grace and dedication, always advocating for her students' needs. Denise is patient, kind-hearted, inclusive, and a true role model for both students and staff. Her calming presence, positivity, and unwavering support make her an invaluable part of the JAM community. She creates a welcoming environment for all, brings joy to learning, and helps students reach their full potential. Denise's love for her students is evident in everything she does, and her years of experience have made a lasting impact. We are so lucky to have her. Congratulations to Denise Purvis, Jackson Academy of Math and Music. I hope she has no more student loans, by the way. Just want to say. At San Martin Gwynn Environmental Science Academy, Teacher of the Year is Ashley Hart. When any middle schooler at SMG is asked who their favorite teacher is, almost all respond with Ms. Hart. It never surprises anyone, as Ashley has managed to create a learning environment where students feel safe and can thrive. She plans lessons that keep students engaged, make them excited to learn, and are relevant to their lives. We all see the loves she shows her students from deep within her heart, which is combined with excellent teaching skills. Ashley is always smiling, flexible, and helpful. She's a great person and a fantastic teacher who is always willing to help colleagues and students. These are just some of the reasons that make Ashley SMG's Teacher of the Year. Congratulations, Ashley Hart, San Martin Gwynn. Britton Middle School is pleased to honor Sierra Silva as their Teacher of the Year. Sierra consistently goes above and beyond for both her students and colleagues. She excels in engaging her students, maintaining high academic rigor while fostering a welcoming and inclusive classroom atmosphere. With a strong yet approachable presence, she creates an environment where students feel both challenged and supported. Her contributions include activities like poetry slams and Socratic seminars. In addition, Sierra plays roles on campus as a lead teacher for the ELA department and as a track coach. She approaches both responsibilities with dedication, tirelessly striving to support and mentor others. Sierra always is willing to help and support new teachers, and many have stated how lucky they feel to have her as a colleague. Due to all of this and more, Sierra deserves her flowers and recognition for all she does. Congratulations, Sierra Silva, Britton Middle School. Martin Murphy Middle School's Teacher of the Year is Sandra Pacheco. Sandra stated that she was truly humbled and deeply grateful for being chosen. It is because she embodies the qualities of devotion, diligence, and dedication that she is known to colleagues as the GO Teacher for support for EL students. Sandra takes the time to get to know each of her students and their families. She goes above and beyond just being the classroom teacher. Her classroom door is literally always open to all. Never is any student who wants help turned away. Even while furthering her own education, she has provided engaging opportunities for all students, but especially to students with limited language skills, in order to ensure that they know that they are a valued part of the Murphy School community. Congratulations to Sandra Pacheco, Martin Murphy Middle School Teacher of the Year. Raven Jackson is Central High School Teacher of the Year. Raven has been a special education teacher in Morgan Hill Unified for nine years. She has spent the last four years working for Central High School with the post-secondary class, where she does wonders with her students, working on many community-based projects as part of the Transition Partnership Program. That helps students with job skills as they prepare for life after high school. This includes helping at parks and community areas in Morgan Hill, assisting kitchen staff at Sobrato High School, and cleanup projects on our own campus. On Front Fridays, they do different activities, including bowling, going to the library, and shopping in the community to practice money math skills. She is widely respected by her students, families, and colleagues. Congratulations, Raven Jackson, Central High School. Live Oak High School Teacher of the Year is Courtney Schmidt. Courtney goes above and beyond to support both staff and students in her role. She is always the first one to respond to requests for supports and strategies to help our students achieve. This year, when a couple of our students experienced loss in their family, Courtney reached out to help teachers in the loop, starting a meal train and support group system for this family. When things start to get messy for campus-wide needs like LPAC, iReady, and other testing procedures, Courtney is there to pick up the pieces. Whether it's checking in regularly about students on their caseloads, responding to challenges with students with incredibly useful strategies, improving literacy rates among my grade students, supporting home and school club, or signing up to be a class advisor, Courtney is an amazing member of the Acorn staff, and we are so lucky to have her at Live Oak. Congratulations, Courtney Schmidt, Live Oak High School Teacher of the Year. Jorge Paredes is Sobrato's High School Teacher of the Year. Mr. Paredes is a phenomenal math teacher. Students speak so highly of his teaching and the way he is able to help them understand challenging concepts through his strategies and communication. He utilizes a variety of activities with his students to meet them where they are, give them a challenge, and support them, employing differentiated activities based on their strengths. He also goes out of his way to support students outside of class time, even when they aren't his own students. He supports all freshmen through the Freshmen Success Team, and he is constantly going above and beyond for his colleagues. He is a lifelong learner who himself pursues additional opportunities to improve his practice. He's an incredible, well-rounded educator. He is truly helping his kids love math. Congratulations to Jorge Paredes, Sobrato High School Teacher of the Year. Our final honoree this evening is Crystal Martin, who we identify as a non-site-specific Teacher of the Year because she travels through many, many sites doing a lot of different things. And Crystal works hard for all of our educators every day, and her work makes digital instruction possible in our district. Crystal monitors technology, materials, supplies, and licenses to assure they are all working or to inform educators of any concerns. She maintains user access and accounts, user accesses and accounts to ensure online core curriculum and supplemental programs are available. And she provides ongoing training and professional development to administrators and teachers to ensure they are able to effectively support student learning. Her willingness to help others through sharing of resources, assisting with planning and modeling of lessons is invaluable to her colleagues. Crystal is constantly conducting research around instructional technology and assessment for all content areas to help improve what we all have available to us in Morgan Hill. Thank you, Crystal, for all the work that you do. Congratulations to Crystal Martin, non-site-specific, Morgan Hill Teacher of the Year. I had also mentioned before we call everyone up that we, the Executive Council of the Federation also takes all of those teachers, which you can see are quite amazing, and then we narrow it down, and we select one teacher to represent the district as the District Teacher of the Year. Now, you've already heard her name once, but I am honored to tell you again, it is Raven Jackson. So if we can get all of you that are here to please come up for a photo opportunity. Only a couple of miscreants, not too bad sure.
After such a wonderful occasion as that, I kind of feel a little bad about going on to regular business, but here we go. That was marvelous. Okay. We're on Item G, Public Comment Communications. This is for members of the public may address the board on topics not listed on the agenda. Do we have any requests? Not seeing no requests, I won't read out the rest of the instructions then. Okay, then we move to Section 8, Communication, starting with our student board member. Who may have been counting on me reading the rest of the other information. How are we doing, Faruki? Good to go? All right. And if we could get one of the two lights turned off so we can see the screen a little better, that would help. That helps some.
The sun, the blind.
Don't turn off the sun, we all need that. Yeah, that blind is kind of... Thank you. There'll be no complaints about working out of class. Thank you. Okay, please.
So at Sobrato, or at all the high schools, we had Decision Day for all the seniors on May 1st, and that was a really exciting day for a lot of people, a lot of celebration for both the schools, lots of high achievers. They had their spring musical on the 2nd and the 3rd. And prom for Sobrato was last weekend, a lot of fun for them. And senior awards for both Live Oak and Sobrato was yesterday. And we're, Sobrato's hosting the district concert on 21st tomorrow, where Sobrato, Live Oak, Martin Murphy, and JAM are all performing. And Sobrato's hosting a senior goodbye rally on the 23rd. So at Live Oak, Decision Day, of course, and then we had our Green and Gold Awards, which is awarded to like students who showed like school conduct really well and performed really well on state testing. And then we have, we had incoming athletics night on the 13th for incoming freshmen who were doing sports. And then we had our spring band concert on the 14th, and Drama had their awards night on Saturday last week. Senior Awards was, of course, yesterday as well. And the dance show is this Friday, where the dance class is performing. And there's the athletic boosters night on the 27th, and they're doing Powder Puff on the 30th. And for those who are unaware of what Powder Puff is, it's basically when girls sign up for flag football, and it acts as like a football game. Burton, they have their eighth grade, Great America trip on the 23rd. And El Toro, they hosted a movie and picnic night on the 9th, and they had a drum performance on the 13th, and they're having their talent show on the 23rd. Central High School had a fam- or hosted a family fair, or they're hosting a family fair, sorry, on the 30th. And San Martin Gwynn is hosting a talent show on the 22nd. Paradise Valley has had their science camp a few weeks ago, from the 6th to 9th, and they're having their Sacramento field trip on the 30th. And at Barrett, they had their Lotteria Night on the 2nd. And what they're doing this month is that every Monday, they're hosting this workshop. It's a seven-week workshop called Resilient Families, where they teach families and children, or like families with their children, how to deal with stress and cope with challenges that are coming their way, and how to teach children how to deal with oncoming stress. And on the 15th, they had their open house and salsa competition. Los Piseos, they're having their school picnic on the 28th, and PA Walsh had their open house on the May 1st, and they're having their talent show on the 22nd. Martin Murphy had their sixth grade info night on the 15th. They're having their eighth grade trip on the 29th, and they have a dance coming up on the 30th. And for JAM, they have their annual dinner and auction on the 2nd, and they had a Cinco de Mayo band show on May 5th, of course, and their Earthskate BBQ is on the 23rd this week, and their end-of-year music performances are on the May 30th. And that's it.
Wow. Thank you very much. We'll now move to Item H2, Superintendent Report.
Thank you very much, President Horner. So this update includes the past two weeks. It's a snapshot of the past two weeks. But first, I want us to recognize and thank our classified members in our school district. This is Classified School Employees Week, and I would argue that every day and every week should be Classified School Employees Week. So thank you to our classified members for serving as our backbone of our organization. And student board member Faruki did mention the senior awards night, so what I'm projecting right now occurred yesterday. At Sobrato was absolutely wonderful, and I had to leave a little bit early because I had to make my way to the Live Oak High School Senior Awards Night, so I was delighted to have been able to attend both, and both were uniquely beautiful. Live Oak had the parents or the trusted adults that the students picked place all of their cords around their neck, and so that was a very lovely gesture, in addition to the various scholarships that the students received. And Marion, student board member Faruki, was announced as a salutatorian for Live Oak High School, so yay, yay, Marion. And we are, we have a commencement coming up. We have Central High School will be our first graduation on June the 5th. Live Oaks will be June 6th. At Sobrato's will be June 6th, and our Community Adult School will be June 11th. In addition, after summer school, we will have a summer graduation. We don't have the date just yet, but once that has been selected and finalized, we will have a fifth commencement exercise for our students. We are anticipating about 650 graduates, so congratulations to all of our graduates. We also had our district roundtable meetings, and these are quarterly meetings that we have with our parents and our administrators. Was powerful in that every community representative was able to provide a summary of their year-long activities for how they're encouraging parent engagement, and there was a lot of cross-pollination, a lot of stealing from each of the sites, "How did you do that? I want to do that." And so it was wonderful to hear from our parents, and deep appreciation to our parents for continuing to provide support to our district and to our schools. Continuing my coffee chats, and this latest coffee chat was at the FACE Center. I enjoy my coffee chats for the many reasons I bring to your attention every month when I share that I have coffee chats. They're unscripted, without an agenda. It's listening to our parents and our community members who are bringing ideas and concern, so on and so forth. So thank you to the entire Morgan Hill community for continuing to engage in these coffee chats. We also officially welcomed our county superintendent during our Santa Clara County Superintendent Meeting, so Dr. Tostin, I believe that's his last name, Totsen, Tostin. Tostin. I apologize if I'm butchering his name, he's our new county superintendent. We also held our city-school liaison meetings. These are typically quarterly meetings that we have with the city of Morgan Hill. Many topics were discussed, essentially topics that overlap both agencies, our district and the city of Morgan Hill. I want to bring to everyone's attention a program. It's called Elevate, and it is going to be completely free, not just for the adults who attend our adult school, but also the adults in our community who are interested in business licenses or learning how to strengthen their business. And so we will have the official launch Thursday, May 29th, from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m., and all are welcome. And also happening on May 29th is our Morgan Hill Education Foundation event. It's our I Love Morgan Hill Public Schools, I Apple Heart.
Live Oak had the parents or the trusted adults that the students picked place all of their cords around their neck, and so that was a very lovely gesture, in addition to the various scholarships that the students received. And Miriam, student board member Faruki, was announced as a soliditorian for Live Oak High School, so yay, yay, Miriam. And we are, we have a commencement coming up. We have Central High School will be our first graduation on June the 5th, Live Oak's will be June 6th, and Sobrato's will be June 6th, and our community adult school will be June 11th. In addition, after summer school, we will have a summer graduation. We don't have the date just yet, but once that has been selected and finalized, we will have a fifth commencement exercise for our students. We are anticipating about 650 graduates, so congratulations to all of our graduates. We also had our district roundtable meetings, and these are quarterly meetings that we have with our parents and our administrators. Was powerful in that every community representative was able to provide a summary of their year-long activities for how they're encouraging parent engagement, and there was a lot of cross-pollination, a lot of stealing from each other's side, so how did you do that? I want to do that. And so it was wonderful to hear from our parents, and deep appreciation to our parents for continuing to provide support to our district and to our schools. Continuing my coffee chats, and this latest coffee chat was at the FACE Center. I enjoy my coffee chats for the many reasons I bring to your attention every month when I share that I have coffee chats. They're unscripted, without an agenda, it's listening to our parents and our community members who are bringing ideas and concern, so on and so forth. So thank you to the entire Morgan Hill community for continuing to engage in these coffee chats. We also officially welcomed our county superintendent during our Santa Clara County Superintendent meeting, so Dr. Tostin, I believe that's his last name, Totsen, Tostin? Tostin. I apologize if I'm butchering his name, he's our new county superintendent. We also held our city school liaison meetings, these are typically quarterly meetings that we have with the city of Morgan Hill. Many topics were discussed, essentially topics that overlap both agencies, our district and the city of Morgan Hill. I want to bring to everyone's attention a program, it's called Elevate, and it is going to be completely free, not just for the adults who attend our adult school, but also the adults in our community who are interested in business licenses or learning how to strengthen their business. And so we will have the official launch Thursday, May 29th, from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m., and all are welcome. And also happening on May 29th is our Morgan Hill Education Foundation event, it's our "I Love Morgan Hill Public Schools, I Apple Heart" of Morgan Hill Public Schools. You're going to be seeing a lot of these bumper stickers popping up around our community, and this, there it is, we have one already, and if you're interested in one, we can provide one for you. But we look forward to showcasing our student talent, we have a lot of student talent. And tonight is a student board member Faruki's last board meeting, and we wanted, alternate student board member Vicki was not able to join us, but we have a plaque in recognition of your dedication, your year-long investment, Mary, student board member Faruki, in our students, and elevating student agency and voice, and always driving point, driving home the point of the student perspective. And I cannot speak on behalf of the board, I'm sure they will want to say a few words, but I thank you for being the voice of our students and for your ideas that will outlive your tenure here, we absolutely promise you that. So, here's the plaque. So I like to, I like to read it out loud. With our greatest appreciation, we hereby present Miriam Faruki recognition for your contributions to the Morgan Hill Unified School District as the student board representative for the 24-25 school year. So thank you and congratulations.
Would you like to say anything? Top quiz.
It's been really an honor to serve as a student board member. I think into this, like, I didn't know what to expect, I just kind of knew like what my role was supposed to be, but I didn't know how to do my role, I didn't know what I could do, I didn't, especially, I really liked how massive the network is for student board members. I mean, this reaches even beyond when you're already done being a student board member, reaches into, there's always like this alumni network, and I think this gives a lot of perspective to things that, you know, you think when you're done with elementary, middle school, like, that's it, like, you know, now high school or college. But now I think back onto my elementary, middle school years, and we can still think like, oh, well, how can we make that better, you know? Like, I see like all these school site presentations, especially the elementary, middle schools, I'm like, that was definitely not how I was when I was in elementary, like, I remember all these like events or festivities, like, when I read aloud my reports, like, the movie nights, or like picnic nights, or those dances, like, I never had any of that when I was at elementary, middle school. So it's really nice to see like, well, now these kids can have it, and now we can see how community engagement is getting bigger and bigger with all of this like recognition and identification of these problems that we need to address. So yeah, thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Miriam. And we, as I mentioned, student board, student alternate student board member Vicki will also receive her plaque, we'll make sure, she couldn't be here tonight, so we'll make sure to give it to her. And so we wish Vicki the best of luck as she moves on to UC Santa Cruz. And Miriam, I can say where you're going, but do you want to tell the board where you're going?
I'll be going to UCLA for computer science and engineering.
So we wish you the absolute best, and I know that we'll stay in touch, so congratulations.
Anything anyone would like to add before we take a picture?
I just wanted to say that, you know, I, I've really appreciated just your take and your perception, your point of view, and everything that, when you do your board reports, but also too, just your presence. I don't know if you're aware, you just have this awesome presence, and you embody student representation, you do it very well, and so we are going to miss you, and, you know, whoever steps in, you know, for next year is going to have some really big shoes to fill, so, thank you so much.
Ask you, Muntzen, please.
Okay. I just wanted to congratulate you for a job well done. You are a very articulate young woman, and I don't think anyone could do a better job than you, so they're gonna, like she said, they're gonna have some really big shoes to fill. I think you have great things on your horizon. I know, like you said, you know, they had picnics and stuff in middle school, like, I don't remember doing any of this, this was not on my agenda to be politically active as you are, and just to make change and to see where the need is and to go for it, so you have big things on your horizon.
I just want to say congratulations, and you are a star, and you are going to take that star with you to UCLA, expand it, do well, we will miss you, congratulations.
Please, Trustee Alman.
Sitting next to me Tuesday nights, never going to be the same. So, yeah, so she's going to join us on Zoom because she's going to miss sitting next to me. So Miriam, I remember you when you were at Britain, and I'm really proud of how you've grown, and I love the fact that you're willing to jump in and challenge. And I haven't seen many students willing to push their perspective, and that desire will take you far, and congratulations. I'll miss sitting next to you on Tuesday nights.
Thank you. Please.
I, I agree with what everyone said, we're really going to miss you, and I just wanted to recognize, I think it's really unique how community-minded you are for how young you are, and that's a really valuable quality that I'm excited you'll be bringing to UCLA and your future career.
Thank you. I enjoyed being your neighbor up until a while ago. Missed that part of the role, but you, like others said, you've been such an inspiration, and tonight you also made me feel younger, because I often see things going on in our schools and go, wow, that looks way better than I remember grade school being. So hearing that come from you now, I don't feel like a 64-year-old anymore because we're quite a bit apart, but thank you for that, and really look forward to, please stay in touch with us all, let us know if there's ever, besides your student board member network, I hope you'll consider the adults here also part of your network to reach out to, if there's any way we can be helpful, and we hope to someday see you back as an adult in the community contributing in another, another capacity, because you have so much to give, you've already made a big difference, and you've only just begun, so thank you very much. Okay? Oh, more pictures, more pictures.
Is it a big group hug, or is it just?
You're ready to poop it out.
Okay, perfect. Ready, one, two, three. Ready? One, two, three. Why are you in the back?
There we go. Okay, this is good. One, two, three. Thank you.
And my slide, sorry, is, last day's school will be June the 6th, and summer school begins June 16th, 2025, and this concludes my report.
Thank you very much. Now we'll move to employee group reports, I believe we're starting with Cheryl Vandeventer for the Morgan Hill Classified Employee Association. Welcome.
Thank you. See if this is still on, yes it is. Good evening, President Horner, trustees, superintendent, colleagues, and guests. My name is Cheryl Vandeventer, and I am honored to be the president of Morgan Hill Classified Employees Association. I also want to thank our student board member Faruki. You have brought an amazing perspective to this board, and I just want to applaud you for your courage in the things that you have shared with us, and really helping us to see things from a student's perspective. I am truly inspired by you, and I hope that you continue to speak up and let people know what they need to hear, because you have a very, very amazing way of letting people know that with, in the, with the utmost respect, and I really appreciate that, and I cannot wait to see where you go from here, and I am going to be one of those people that says, I knew you when, so, it's, it's been absolutely wonderful to have you on this board. Thank you very much for your service. This is scholarship time, and I'm happy to share that MHCEA is awarding 11 scholarships this year, eight to graduating seniors and three to current college students. It was quite interesting this year that we received three applications from Live Oak, three from Sobrato, and two from Christopher High School in Gilroy, and then we had our college students as well. So for those of you who don't know about our scholarship program, it's pretty simple. We invite graduating seniors and current college students, who are the children of MHCEA members, to complete an easy application that tells us a little bit about them so that we can get a glimpse of what they've done in school and any volunteer work that they've done. It's wonderful to see the wide variety of activities that they write about. This time, we are able to give scholarships to all of the seniors and college students that applied. That's not always going to be the case for us, but I, so far, we have never exceeded our budget for scholarships, so that's great. Our scholarships are $500, and the students receive a certificate, I brought one with me, and their certificate, certificate looks like this, and it is signed by the four officers of the association, and it comes in this nice little jacket, and they received this along with a check, and it's, this is our way of helping our members, because we're all a family, and these are our kids too. We are privileged to have been asked to join alongside with SCCOE and MHUSD to launch the Special Education Apprenticeship Program. I cannot even tell you how excited I am about this program, I, I have such a heart for paraprofessionals and what they do as classified employees, and what they do with our children and for our children amazes me, truly, and so this program will allow paraprofessionals to get their AA, their BA, and then their special education teaching credential while they're continuing to work for Morgan Hill and be paid by Morgan Hill. The program offers a sizable stipend to paraprofessionals as well while they're learning. The ladies and gentlemen that we are working with have just kind of, really moved mountains to, to help us, to help this program to be part of West Valley College, and I believe Gavlin is now on board, and it's just amazing, they're, you know, I mean, they're going to hold classes here, they're going to do everything in their power to make this doable for our paraprofessionals, and it's, it's just absolutely phenomenal, I have been pumping it up as much as I possibly can, and probably driving them crazy with emails, but I just completely believe in this, and I really hope that a lot of our paraprofessionals will take advantage of this program. I've never seen anything like it, and I think that it's going to be a wonderful advantage for, actually for all of us and for the state of California, so it's, it's really great. I know you're going to hear a lot more about it in the future, because it's going to be happening, and we actually will begin, oh, sorry, we're going to hold four sessions, then they start tomorrow, and we'll introduce the program to any paraprofessionals that come, and then hopefully we'll get some to sign up and get things going to be a part of it, I believe launch will be in the fall. Is that correct? Oh, well, January, sorry. Winter, winter or spring, sorry, it's been changing. So anyway, I just wanted you to know about that if you don't already, it's a very exciting program, and I'm really excited that Morgan Hill has agreed to jump on board with this, and it's a win-win for everybody, and I know there's a lot of people out there already excited about it. As you know, negotiations continue between MHCEA and MHUSD. We've had some great, respectful, and fun sessions, and we are hoping to reach a settlement that everyone can accept. And last but not least, I don't know if you've heard, so in case you haven't, I am retiring this July. I will be two months shy of 26 years with Morgan Hill Unified, and I would not have missed it for anything. Sorry. Sorry, I got it. I just want to say that these have been some of the greatest years of my life, and this was the hardest decision that I've ever made. So with my retirement comes elections, and tomorrow nominations close for the office of president. My term will end on June 30th, and I look forward to spending my time in July with our new president and vice president. Thank you so much for your time, it's been an honor.
Thank you very much, Cheryl. We applaud you for your, we'll call it 26 years of amazing effort and work, and really wish you all the best in retirement, and hope after you refresh a little bit, you know, you might get a little bored, maybe you want to come around a little bit, you know?
I hate to tell you this, but I'm moving to Texas.
Oh, well, you can still come back and visit.
I don't know, I'm going to the full-time ministry and back to school, and I've got big plans, so.
Wow, that's amazing, okay, okay. Well, we wish you the best then on your next way of making a contribution to the community, I'm sure you'll be very impactful, thank you. Okay, now Morgan Hill Federation of Teachers, Mr. Levis.
Thank you, nice to be, to be back up here. Good evening, President Horner, Board Trustees, Superintendent Garcia, staff and guests, I am Jim Levis, the proud president of the Morgan Hill Federation of Teachers. Congratulations to student board member Faruki for really stepping up and representing the almost 8,000 students here in Morgan Hill. So that's quite a, quite a challenge, and I think you have done a great job on that. I've certainly appreciated your insight, your contributions, and your challenges to the board, to the district, to the teachers, all the employees, and your support for your fellow students. And I certainly wish you good luck and success, and I think UCLA is getting a wonderful student, so congratulations moving forward. I did want to again congratulate the MHFT site teachers of the year, and of course Raven Jackson from Central High School as our district teacher of the year, and I wish to thank the board and Superintendent Garcia for honoring them at tonight's meeting. While MHFT members choose one member from each site and one non-site to recognize for their exemplary hard work and dedication, all MHFT members are working hard every day to provide excellent and exciting learning opportunities for our students. It's always difficult to choose, but it is important that we honor them and their work, and appreciate your support of that. Tonight, of course, is the last board meeting before school lets out. The end of the year brings many activities of celebration for MHFT members and our students, end of the year field trips, field days, promotions, graduations. Students are also busy demonstrating all that they have learned through the year-end testing, shall we say, AP final exams, CASP testing, iWork, or iReady work, FNP and literably testing, ESGI summary data, and of course, end of year projects and presentations. In addition to that, however, it's a very exciting time, of course, for our high school seniors, as they finally reach the end of their K-12 adventure with graduation, getting their future plans in order, touring and committing to colleges, entering the workforce or joining the military. They have many important decisions to make, and I wish them all well. Our middle schools are hosting dances, spirit weeks, and of course, promotion to high school, and our elementary schools are also celebrating at this time of the year, busy with multiple open houses, food trucks, choirs, book fairs, student presentations, and a whole myriad of other things. And I also want to thank student board member Faruki again for giving such a wonderful list of all the different activities happening between now and the end of the year, it's certainly going to be a busy time for everyone. I would like to wish all of our students and families at all grade levels a successful end of the school year and summer, and we look forward to seeing many, if not most, of you all back next year, and seniors, you can come back and visit too, we appreciate that. In finalizing the MHFT board communication plan this year, MHFT office staff shared their final Google Sheets presentation of the year with all board trustees this morning, focusing a day on a day in the life of an educator. We encourage you all to take the opportunity to look over the presentation, as it gives you insight on how the educators in this district feel on a daily basis working here. And as always, please reach out to us with any questions or concerns that you have. I wish to close, and by acknowledging the hard work of the teachers of the year and of all the teachers and certificated staff in the district, I also want to acknowledge all the hard work of the classified and administrative staff, many, of course, who will be working throughout the summer to keep everything rolling here. It takes all of us working together to bring the programs to our students and families. The end of the year, while fun and exciting, is also very, very busy and very, very stressful. We will continue to work hard during these last 12 days of instruction, thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, item H4 is our upcoming events calendar, the long calendar has been posted on the website, and refer you to that for further information. Our next item will be our theme study session, I want to just take a quick about five-minute stretch break, let everybody loosen up and get ready, so we'll start about 7:02, if everyone can get back here in a timely fashion, thank you. If everyone can get back here in a timely fashion, thank you.
Go through what materials you have in front of you. So across the tables or the dais, there are three silver buckets that have some fidgets in them. So if you find yourself in the need for some little movement, something to keep your hands busy, help yourself there. Also in front of you is kind of a stack of papers. So the first one you have is a green thumbs up and a red thumbs down. If during our presentation, you come across a time when you have a question, if you're feeling brave, you may raise your hand, ask the question. But if you're a little bit more timid and would like a visual, if you are good to go, you can leave it on the green. If you flip it to the red side, we'll know that you have a question and we will get with you and ask you what your question is. The next item is a first then board. This is something that we frequently use with our special education students to help them figure out what the work tasks are and what their reward is at the end. So for your first then, first, we are going to do our board meeting, then, and you guys can fill it in, what it is you want to work for. You want to work for going home, you want to work for a snack. So you guys fill that in and keep it in front of you so you know what you're working for. The next item is a list of special education acronyms. So obviously, these are not every acronym possible because we love our acronyms, but these are ones that will be found throughout the presentation. So that's front and back on that one. Then there are three visual schedules. So these three visual schedules are differentiated. So there's the first one that is black and white, has just kind of the words to follow through the flow of the evening. There is another agenda that has colors and boxes. So if you do better with checking things off when they're finished, this visual schedule is available for you to use. Or if you prefer pictures, there's a picture visual schedule. So you can choose whichever visual schedule
Thanks, Teachee.
works for you. And then the last item is a note catcher for you. They look very similar on the front and back. So you just want to make sure that you are starting in the upper right-hand corner, the one that says page one, and it'll flow through the different portions of the presentation. So you can make notes, jot down any questions you have as we go throughout. Any questions about the materials you have? Yes, ma'am. Would you like to borrow one? I have a pen, but here.
Thank you, Kristin. We really appreciate it. All right, can we go to the next slide? Thank you. Well, we always like to start our meetings and to be centered in our district vision and mission. We find it's a great way to center our shared purpose, right, and the direction we're going. And I will not read this to you because it's on all of our documents and on our district website. But we'd like to put it on there because this is an opportunity to also share with those folks joining us via Zoom, right, what our vision is. And it's about excellence in education and making sure that students are prepared. I think the last bullet there in the blue, right, as graduation approaches, we want to make sure all students are prepared when they walk across the stage, right, of whatever career and journey where adulthood takes them. And then the next slide, if you don't mind, it's our mission, right, like how will we accomplish those things that we set out in our vision as our district? So we talk a little bit about our purpose, our partnership with parents and communities, our community, and then model that nurtures stability and respect and compassion and equity and service. So we'd like to start with that grounding as we move forward today's presentation. Next slide, please. All right, so our purpose, our vision emphasizes that excellence in education. It's a little more explanation of that grounding. We want to ensure that we're working together. And you've been through enough presentations where we talk about LCAP, where we talk of our priorities in our district about preparing our students for that global and diverse society. And we want to ensure that our students feel empowered, right, to achieve their unique goals and their potential. And so all of these ways that we support our student aligns with the priorities that are both outlined in our seminal documents like our LCAP and the work that we do. And tonight, we're going to highlight that work with supporting inclusion, equity, and access and supporting our students with disabilities. And I'm going to end tonight, and again, this is a big part of what we do, I think, in Morgan Hill and really speaking to our why of the work that we do, right? So I'm going to ask my colleagues when they come up and share their slide and their part of the presentation to introduce themselves. But part of what we talk a lot about, the kind of key aspect of the work, the value of our work, right, that thing that anchors you, right, when things get really tough, right, when you have lots of reports are coming up, it's that time of the year, right, for all of us, I think, across the district, is remembering the why we do the work that we do. And so we really believe that belonging is a human right, that every child deserves to be seen, valued, and included. We believe that we should be working together for inclusive classrooms to that all students with their all-gender education students, excuse me, have what they need for dignity and respect. My apologies for that. And then the last one is meaningful access for every student. That means that they're learning along their peers and that they're getting what they need to grow emotionally and socially, and that together, we're improving outcomes for all of our students. All right, so I'm going to turn it over to our next presenter.
Good evening. My name is Sarah Melville, and I'm one of the program coordinators in our sped department, working mainly with our secondary sites. So I've been working in sped for a while. For me, it was a second career. And, you know, learnt this word accommodations. And I'd been working for a while, but I was like, I actually have a lot of accommodations. So I didn't grow up wearing glasses, for instance, like mid-40s, bam, one year. It's like, I need glasses now. And now I literally cannot function without them. I'm sure others feel that. When I was a classroom teacher, if I didn't have that key around my neck, I lost that thing. It wasn't accommodation for me. I had to wear it around my neck, otherwise I just lost it, which never a good thing. I hate to go to Costco without a list because then things don't get bought. So there's some other thoughts there on the slide. Think about your life. Are there any supports, any accommodations that you really need? Next slide, please. So I don't think we think about this very often, but in fact, disability is a minority group that any of us could actually join at any time, or maybe one of our loved ones could. It's a very sobering thought, but one that bears thinking about. And the next slide. So about 12 and a half years ago, I was a paraprofessional back then, and it's just a few days before Thanksgiving, and I'm painting a chimney, as you do, and I fell off. Thankfully, single story. But there I was on the patio, few seconds, boom. That Thanksgiving, I definitely had a very different perspective because I could help cook. I could sit down and eat with the family and have conversation, talk with them. I could read a book afterwards. Massive bruise, I had a headache, but it could have been so much worse. And it was just a few seconds, and that could have been me with a traumatic brain injury or maybe paralyzed or some other injury that could have really impacted my life. So some thoughts that if something like that was to happen to us or is to happen again to a family member, maybe a partner or a grandchild, what impact that would have, not just Thanksgiving, but any other day? I meant to bring up my timer and I forgot. So maybe just as we just swapped speakers now, just think what emotions just maybe come into your mind, maybe jot that down on your notes. Reality is, it could happen to any of us. I obviously should have made another note. It wasn't a good enough accommodation. Okay, so Taryn talked about the accent I had, as well as looking at how that affected me personally, how it have also affected our relationships, how that impacted my relationships with my family, my work colleagues. So again, just think about how that could impact you. That last question in particular, what would you want people to understand about your challenges and your resilience? Apologies for that little confusion.
Thank you, Sarah. It just made me think a little bit, right? One of the things that is a challenge for me, right, this is just personal because it just happened, I ran out of breath as I have allergies, right, and asthma. And so when those two work together, right, we need some accommodations. So thank you for being gracious. You know, part of what we wanted to set the stage is really to think about our personal perspective when we think about the challenges that we might face. It's, I think it was part of our work, we tried to put ourselves in other people's shoes, right, in order to make that connection and understanding. But one of the things, if you don't mind, I'm going to talk a little bit about the importance of our work in relation to those post-high school outcomes that we have, that research tells us that impact the lives of students with disabilities. And I do think it's extremely appropriate that we have this conversation because, as I just stated a couple of minutes ago, right, we're in that mode of celebrating, right, post-secondary achievement for our students, right? They're going to walk across that stage. And part of our challenge is to make sure that we prepare that students for that 22nd century. I know people say 21st century, but we're 25 years in, right? Like, we can look ahead. If you don't mind going to the next page. And so one of the things that is very crucial for us to understand as we think about our work with inclusion and access and equity is that students with disabilities experience more disproportionate rates of poverty once they graduate from high school, that students with disability, that students of color with a disability have even higher rates of poverty post-secondary, that people with disabilities are more likely than all the population to experience homelessness, to be rent burdened and to be unable to afford housing, and face the highest rate of housing discrimination than any other population. Next, please, Peach. Let's talk a little bit about what makes you able to purchase that home, right, or be able to afford that rent. And so according to the Bureau of Labor Statistics, the unemployment rate for people with disability is about double than what it is for people without disabilities. The unemployment rate for people with disability drops with higher levels of education. I don't think that surprises many of us. And even so, even with a bachelor's degree, people with disabilities face higher unemployment rates than those with disabilities. Next slide, please. A little bit about other areas that touch the students who walk across our stage, and that is that people with disabilities are overrepresented at all stages of the criminal justice system. Compared to 15% of the United States general population, 40% of people in state prisons have a disability. And while cognitive disabilities such as autism or Down syndrome or learning disorders impact about a fourth of incarcerated people, visual hearing and ambulatory disabilities are not uncommon, and individuals with these disabilities are often overlooked and subject to inhumane treatment. Next slide, please. So we're here to talk a little bit about the work that we're doing in our district and the work that's at the heart and the core of those purposes and values, about how do we interrupt those predictable cycles of failure, right? And what actions are we taking together to create equity and inclusion for all of our students? But tonight's emphasis is going to be with our students with disabilities as well. So some of the things that we're working on together in our district is about inclusive tier-one instruction. Some of the things that we have in our district that are guiding us in that direction so that we can interrupt that cycle of failure are our integrated MTSS. And as Kristin said, or I think one of my friends here said, we have a lot of acronyms, that's multi-tiered system of supports for MTSS. We have a very proactive identification and intervention system, and you can see some of the bullets there of the work that we've begun and continue to strengthen. We have co-teaching and collaborative planning together to support our students. We have strong family partnerships. And so if you recall from the presentation that Jesse did in October, we have lots of work with community-based organizations. And then we have our wonderful Facing Community Engagement Center where we partner, right, with lots of our families to provide support. And then, of course, we are focused on those student outcomes so that we can disrupt those cycles for our students. Next page, please. How can you feel like you belong in your community if you don't feel you belong in your own neighborhood school, which is the hub of your community? So I'm going to turn it over to my colleague.
Good evening. I'm Julia Gary Hacinto, the Director of Elementary Education, and I'm here to speak a little bit to the General Education/Special Education Collaboration that Dr. Jimenez just mentioned. So if you could take a moment to look at this cartoon, you can see that the youth are waiting to enter the building, and the youth in the wheelchair is asking if they could please shovel the ramp. Next slide, please. If you could take a moment and reflect, you can jot some notes down on your paper if you'd like, where do we see that kind of stairs-first thinking in our policies and What does it mean to shovel the ramp first in instruction, school climate, or student And how do our mission and vision that Dr. Jimenez reviewed support access and equity? All right, next slide. Oh, thank you very much. All right, so I'm going to talk to you a little bit about ableism and some of the learning that we've been doing with our school site administrators. So ableism is the assumption that disabled people require fixing, and it's also the valuing of non-disabled people over disabled people. And we can see that it has a lot of harmful stereotypes and misconceptions about what people with disabilities are able or not able to do. Some examples in education talk about designing instruction for the average learner and separate, less rigorous instruction. Sometimes there's this perception that students could be better served over there instead of keeping them with me, refusing to provide accommodations or over-accommodating because you think the individual can't do those things. And then also framing people with disability as inspirational, that it's inspiring that they've had to overcome their disability. And that's a part of their life, that's part of who they are, and they just live with that day to day. And so framing them as inspiring is very othering, and, well, you're inspirational because you're different than I am. Next slide, please. So as I mentioned, there's lots of ways that ableism shows up in schools. And one example is fixing the student instead of redesigning the environment. When I was a principal, I had a preschool autism program on my campus, and frequently parents would come to the IEP meeting and say, when are you going to fix my child? And we would have conversations about how there's nothing to fix. We're going to help your child develop skills so that they can successfully navigate the world and the systems around them. Having IEP goals that focus only on compliance, right? The state says we need to do this, and so we're going to do just the minimum. Denying students access to extracurriculars or field trips. You know what? We don't have a nurse who can go with you, so you're going to have to stay back. Or general education not being seen as the primary placement. And this is something that the state's working on with respect to preschool, where students need to be placed in the general education preschool first instead of starting their education already in a separate setting. Next slide, please. Another concept that we've been doing some professional learning around is rightful presence. And rightful presence means that every student, every individual feels as if they belong and they are included. Something our new county superintendent was talking about at one of the trainings I went to was his experience as a person of color and being included because he was a person of color. And that inviting him to an event or an activity doesn't mean he feels like he belongs there, right? He's the token representation. And so how do we make sure that our students feel genuinely heard and understood and that their school is their school and not a place that they've been invited to attend? Next slide, please. So what if we redesign our approach? This is the rest of that cartoon, and the font's a little bit small, but the person shoveling the snow says, oh, I have to get the stairs shoveled first. And the individual in the wheelchair says, but if you shovel the ramp first, we can all get in. Next slide, please. So I'm going to have you revisit those first thoughts that you had originally around the stairs-first thinking and what does it mean to shovel the ramp first? And if you could take a moment to chat with a neighbor about anything that you learned or was of notice to you in that section about ableism and rightful presence. Yeah. We haven't taught this routine, so thank you for figuring it out.
You know, you should do that first because I didn't. Then it's like, duh, anybody can use the ramp. And then talking to Dr. Garcia, I'm like, well, play this for us. Like, why are there any stairs at all? If there was just a ramp, nobody's going to trip, you know? So it's kind of, so stairs, people trip, they fall, there's a sharp edge, you smack your head, maybe. Anyhow, so like, well, wait, that was kind of the quick journey there. It's like, oh, I see, oh, I missable, but why do we have any stairs?
Well, it's a good question. It would have to be like the parking lots where you have to like.
I was just going to share, like, the first thing that came to mind is the science project, right? We assign these science projects, or we, I got a science teacher here, sorry in the room. But I was just thinking, the best boards, you know, anytime you assign a project in elementary school, it's like the best boards and the best aesthetically looking projects always come from the families that have the means, that have the involvement. And it's like, that's always been a frustration is like, how can we, you know? So I always look at it like, oh, just do this at home. Those kinds of assignments make the assumption that there's the support at home that has that. I just thought.
Trustee Altman and North of Gator. Get back to my job. Sorry.
Good job, President Horner. I'll use the acronym from one of my former students, DJ, who said to me, you know, Mrs. Altman, I think that I really like to think of ADHD as an enhancement and not a disability. And so often, neurodiversity does, it's different, and different is where we get the great ideas. If everyone thought the same, then we just have the same ideas and have very little advancement.
It's a superpower. Please.
Yeah, I was actually, it reminded me of a super literal example. Last, I think it was last year, there was a student at Walsh who was in a wheelchair, and I don't think that student got to walk during the promotion. And we had a wheelchair lift, but it didn't, it doesn't work. And I heard about it from the student's para, who's my neighbor, and I'm not sure if they were able to remedy the situation, but it's a pretty clear example.
Yeah, absolutely.
Anyone else? Amber Faruki.
Yeah, when you mentioned like about how that person of color was, when he got invited to a bunch of like groups and stuff, he didn't know if it was because, you know, he was a person of color because he actually was invited there himself. And I think that's like really true, at least like from what I've seen, like in high school. Like, for example, we would have like a rally, and there'd be a special kid, a special ed kid inside the rally, and you know, he, like, everyone would cheer very loud for him when he'd participate. If you would do anything, everyone would cheer very loud for him. But the thing is, it was to the point where you didn't know if it was mocking or if they were actually supporting each other. And I think that that kind of highlights an issue where we can't actually recognize if we are supporting them or just mocking them. Because I think how in my, when we were raised, like my years, you were taught like, always be nice, like always be nice to the special ed kids, always like, you know, put them first. Like, I guess it's like you're teaching kids to over-accommodate the special ed kids and be like, you know, always go easy on them or something like that. And so I think it's such, it's like, when, at the high school level, you can see how that became where like, you know, outside of rallies, you would see the special ed kids like walking alone by themselves at lunch, you know, just wandering around. And then all of a sudden, when they're put in front of a crowd or something like that, like everyone just starts cheering like they're their best friend for like years or something. So I think like that's an issue that I definitely have seen in the high school level.
Anyone else? Please.
So what we discussed was students that were autistic, and trustee Munson had a student that was autistic, and she was teaching the children, you have to share. And the autistic child was trying to grab, and they said, no. The other student said, no, you have to share. And I said, from what I understand from my granddaughter, she's in fifth grade, this carries on. What they learn carries on into the upper grades. So in the fifth grade, she has, there's a student in her classroom that is autistic and has a disability, and sometimes gets a little rambunctious, and there's another student, happens to be the class clown, would tell him, wait, calm down, what is it that you want? Why are you upset? So what is being taught to them in kindergarten, it grows with them into the upper grades. And so they're teaching, they're teaching one another, and they're teaching each other to be patient. So I thought that was, that was just something great to hear.
But yeah, it was a great moment for me because what I was, I was just sharing with her, what I've been teaching them the whole year was demonstrated today when they were playing. The one was kind of like me, you know, he was interfering, and then they shared and whatever. So anyway, just having, teaching the skills, right? And it doesn't necessarily mean when you say you need to share, that one other child doesn't need to share, right? But you have to have the opportunity to and teach them to ask and that kind of thing. So yeah, and then it follows along. So we're just kind of, and then one more thing is that, yes, so we teach for English language, you know, we have strategies for that. Well, my perspective is that if it's helping them, it's going to help everybody. So I use them in my class for everybody to reach, not just, you know, one group.
Very good. Thank you, please.
That's actually an excellent transition because we're gonna, we have a little video for you about planning for instruction.
Do we sound this thing?
It looks like it hasn't buffered.
When you sound, always the problem.
We're going to go spectrum and revolt. Yes, thank you, Nina.
Actually, there we go. Can we go back to the beginning?
Yeah, can you drag it back to the beginning?
Thank you.
It's much more impressive when it's not skipping.
All right, well, that's the end of the video. If you, if you need a little scaffold with your speed reading, basically, she talks about how, like trustee Munson was saying, the strategies that are effective for, you know, students identified as English learners, or students with disabilities, are effective for all students. And in traditional teaching, training programs, they teach you to aim for the middle, the headpin. But if we want to make sure that we're getting all students, then we want to aim for the outside pins. This, we're not doing this. If you could go back to the slide deck. Yeah, there we go, perfect. So in the video, she mentioned universal design for learning, and that is something that we have been working on here in the district, and we're going to continue working on. And it talks about designing for the margins, and making sure that we have the supports and skill-building opportunities available for all students, our advanced learners, and our learners who are still working to develop those foundational skills. It minimizes barriers for students, being able to access the instruction, being able to demonstrate their understanding, and it also shifts from fixing the students to fixing the system. And how do we redesign the learning environment and structure and planning to meet the needs of all learners? Next slide, please. And so we talked a little bit about ableism. Universal Design for Learning interrupts ableism by normalizing differences among students, and that people learn differently, and they come with different background knowledge, and different strengths and areas for growth. And it focuses on redesigning the environment. So a quote from the, from the video was that when we design for the margins, we serve everyone better. Next slide, please. So moving from reflection into action, how can we start redesigning our systems, so that we can use UDL to change the system, rather than asking students to change themselves to be successful within our system? Some examples of systems that we as adults have control over are classroom instruction, board policy language, our school facilities, as you mentioned with the, with the lift, and our family engagement strategies. How do we work with families to understand what encourages their students and helps them feel included at school? Next slide, please. So we've already started making some steps in the right direction. We intentionally redesigned the LCAP last year. The previous LCAP had three main goals, and then the focus goals, goal four, for students with disabilities, separate on its own. In our current LCAP, we moved that focus in under academics, so that we're focusing on academics for all students, with a focus specifically on students identified as English learners, and students with disabilities, so that they're more included in our planning. We've started collaborating with supporting inclusive innovative practices on the development of the Inclusion Roadmap Committee. That was one of the actions that came out of the Empower Ed report that was reviewed previously. We've also started collaborating across all of our departments. So curriculum and instruction, special education, and student services are all working together to focus on student engagement. So the academic portion, we're using the five dimensions of teaching and learning, which has been shared in a, in a previous presentation. And then, as Dr. Jimenez mentioned, Director Swift is working on student engagement, our partnerships with community-based organizations, and through positive behavior supports and interventions. And we're partnering with the Special Education Department to make sure that the things that we're designing in curriculum and instruction and student services also meet the needs of our students with disabilities. And then finally, we've been providing professional development for our site leaders on their role in being proactive and inclusive on campus, and specifically, we worked with them around ableism and rightful presence, similar to what you all learned tonight. Next slide, please. So now I'm going to talk a little bit about the foundation of our education in Morgan Hill, and the foundation is really general education for all, that our students who are English learners, our students who have disabilities, they're all general education students, and they all deserve to have their needs met through that mechanism in our school district. Next slide, please. So here's our multi-tiered system of support, and this is a visual that helps represent how students receive support in different levels of our system. All three of these levels are in the general education section of our system. So at the base, actually, next slide, please. So at the base, you can see the little graphic up in the top corner there, all of our students in the whole district are in that base. It's universal tier one instruction. It is high-quality, standards-aligned teaching for all students. It is based on research and best practices, and it supports the needs of all of our students, including those with IEPs, 504s, English learners, and others. And this instruction is designed to meet the needs of 80 to 85% of our students in their classroom. Next slide, please. So some examples of that are the core academic instruction, using the adopted materials, universal social-emotional learning programs, we use Second Step, regular universal screenings and formative and summative assessments. So at the district level, we use I Ready as our benchmark. And then different classroom practices that teachers use on a day-to-day basis, modeling, checking for understanding, flexible groupings, and providing specific targeted feedback to students. Next slide, please. So now you'll see in that middle section, that's our targeted tier two instruction. Some of our students have moved up from that first level, because they need some additional support. So this is targeted support for students who need additional instruction from what they received in the universal or tier one. It's aligned to the core curriculum, but it focuses on specific skills that students need to be successful, and it serves approximately 10 to 15% of students. This support level is also for all students, including those with IEPs, 504s, English learners, and other identifications. Next slide, please, thank you. So this could look like small group reading interventions, targeting specifically phonics, fluency, or comprehension. It could be math, small groups focused on specific math skills. It might be a behavior support, like check-in, check-out, where there's a special adult on campus that the student checks in with at the beginning of the day, sets some goals, and then checks out at the end of the day to see if they met their goals or not. Also, social-emotional learning groups that target skills like self-regulation, or problem, social problem solving, where they get to practice and have some additional targeted instruction. Next slide, please. And now you'll see that some of our students have moved up from that middle tier two level support, up into our intensive tier three support. This is individualized intensive support for students with significant needs, and it's still in general education. It may involve one-on-one instruction, or very small groups. It's highly specialized and focused on critical skill deficits. So these are usually high-leverage skills that students maybe have gaps in from previous years, and they're really targeting that student's needs to get them caught up as soon as possible. It serves approximately 1 to 5% of students, and it's available for all students, including those with IEPs, 504s, and English learners. Next slide, please. So some examples might be daily one-on-one reading intervention, intensive math tutoring for foundational concepts, or individual behavior support plans. Next slide, please. So we've been doing a lot of work around building these systems for our students, and so I want to share with you a little bit about what we've been working on. So district-wide, we have been working with administrators on the five dimensions of teaching and learning, with a purposeful focus on student engagement. And how do we know students are actively engaged in what they're learning, and that they find it valuable, versus complying and appearing to be learning when, and not actually accessing the content? We are in the process of developing a TK-12 literacy plan, so that we have a clear vision for when our students join us to when they leave us, of what that literacy development should look like. For math, we've been working with, learning more about the TK-12 math framework, so that we can be prepared and well-informed consumers, because we know the state is going to be coming out with an adoption list soon, and we want to make sure that we are looking for materials that are really going to meet the needs of our students, and support our teachers and staff, in being able to target those edge pins, like were mentioned in the video. We have a common district-wide assessment on I Ready, so our students K-12 take that assessment. We are in the process of aligning our student study team systems across school sites, and we've started rolling out Beyond SST as a tool to document what supports and interventions are working for students or not. And then finally, like I mentioned before, we've been doing some administrator training on educational equity and inclusion, specifically around educational benefit, least restrictive environment, and ableism. Next slide, please. Oh, that's too many. Go back one. Where's the elementary one?
It's after the secondary.
Oh, all right.
It's okay. So a little bit of the work, we talked about district-wide, and secondary, obviously, we have our wonderful academic counselors, right, that provide a lot of that tiered intervention and support as well. We partner with some community-based organizations, one of them is Cal Soap, right, who does a lot of mentoring and coaching for, in the, in the secondary, from sixth to 12th grade. Constructing Meaning is an integrated ELD set of strategies, right, that we use across the district, so we are a constructing meaning district for secondary, and it is the way that we build backwards design instruction, and think about the ways that we're setting the stage for all the learning that is going to happen in our classrooms. You've heard from Jesse talk a little bit about freshman success, right, and those are the mentors that we have for that transitional period, right, coming from eighth grade to ninth grade, ensuring that there is a strong adult connection, and that we are following up with students to make sure that they're successful that freshman year as well, and continuing on. We have a lot of great work that's been going on with climate and culture, that includes a PBIS, but that also includes a other set of strategies and designs and activities that happen at the secondary level. And then, of course, you've got other work that we've done this year related to CTE, dual enrollment, and advanced placement. And again, it's about creating the system, and that design, creating that placemat where everything sits as we engage our students.
This is the slide I thought I was talking about. Okay, and then I can speak a little bit about what we've been working on with elementary. So we have a consistent kindergarten through second grade phonics curriculum across all of our school sites, and the feedback we've been getting from teachers about their student growth is huge. The teachers are really excited about how much more confident their students are with letters and sounds and beginning reading skills. It's been really great to hear. We have an elementary reading intervention program available at all of our elementary school sites, and we've started working on P3 coherence collaborative in mathematics. So that's a focus on open tasks and counting collections for our students in TK through third grade. And we've also started P3 supporting oracy for multilingual learners in math. So how do we support our English learners in the language around math, specifically oral language, and how are teachers putting in intentional opportunities for student talk, and then the scaffolds around that, so that regardless of their English level, they're able to participate in the conversations about math? All right, at this moment, I'm going to model giving you a five-minute break. The purpose for giving students breaks is to support executive function, it reduces cognitive load, supports physical and emotional regulation, and promotes inclusion through flexibility. So since we gave you a lot of information, we're going to give you a short five-minute break.
Thank you. All right. See you in five minutes.
See you in five minutes.
So what does LRE look like? It's a continuum of services. And the least restrictive at the bottom there is general education. Next, you have general education with some supports and services. It might be resource or speech in general education. And then we might have a separate class, which might be an SDC class. More restrictive is supports with a one-to-one aide. Remember, that was at the very top of that pyramid. And then we have some students who are served in separate schools. And finally, home instruction and residential placement is the most restrictive. Next slide. So what does that look like in Morgan Hill? Well, we have inclusion programs in Morgan Hill, and those are general education programs. We also have some pull-out services, resource services, speech services, and things like that. Students might get pulled out just for some behavior services, OT, something like that. We also have special day classes. We have special day preschool. We have non-categorical special day classes in elementary school. And then in TK through 12, we have therapeutic programs for students with significant emotional needs. We have extensive support programs, which used to be called moderate to severe, but that has changed now. The credential has changed. And then we have categorical program that's primarily for students that are on the autism spectrum. We have our post-secondary program, which Raven Jackson was the teacher of the year. And she teaches our post-secondary program. She's one of our teachers. And then we have some outside district placements, county office, non-public school, and some other placements for students with very low incidence disabilities. Next slide. So how many students make up special ed? We have about almost 13% of our students, as of last week, were special education students. And if you notice, the general ed and the special ed make up the entire student body, and they are all Tier One students. So how do we fare on our proportionality? So here's our unduplicated students, Stupe Foster Youth, homeless, and our socio-economically You can't see the little numbers on there, but for example, the socio-economically disadvantaged, we have about 2,100 students in Morgan Hill, and about 379 of those are students with disabilities. Next slide. And these are our students who are English learners, initial fluent English proficient and reclassified students. What I want you to notice about this graph and the last one is that they're roughly the same. So what that means is we are not disproportionate in any of those areas in Morgan Hill. If you're wondering what disabilities primarily make up the students in Morgan Hill, who are students with disabilities, we have specific learning disability is our biggest section, autism, other health impairment, speech and language, intellectual disability, emotional disability, and orthopedic impairment. And if you're wondering what the other categories are, remember I said there were 13? We have deaf-blind, deaf, hearing impaired, multiple disabilities, traumatic brain injury, and visual impairment, and those tend to be very low incidence disabilities. So who serves Morgan Hill? We have 10 school psychologists, 2.6 nurses. We have vocational nurses who help students who have specific medical needs, 54 special education teachers, eight mentors of those special education teachers who are interns. We have 90 paraprofessionals. We have OTs, speech therapists. We have counselors who only provide services to students with disabilities. We have board-certified behavior analysts, six of those. They also serve general ed students. We have one adaptive PE teacher, and then we have a number of contracted services that we contract out for students with lower incidence needs. We also have a coordinator of workability and transition partnership, and we have a job developer. So we have three coordinators. And if you're wondering why we need three coordinators, these are the three hardest working women in the district, I promise you. They support teachers and related service providers. They attend and facilitate IEPs. They provide coaching, quarterly meetings, newsletters, recruit, interview, reference check, and onboard all new special education staff, teachers, paraprofessionals, all the specialists. They support our students in non-public and county programs, and they ensure that state and federal guidelines are followed, so we don't get in trouble with the feds and the state. And they support site staff and families for students who are transitioning from kindergarten to elementary, from elementary to middle school, and making those transitions into the next phase of their life. They coordinate extended school year. They hire. They prepare all of the equipment that students need, and they make sure that all of the extended school year is specifically for students with disabilities. They make sure that all of those materials are in place and ready to go for extended school year. And then there's me. I oversee all of it. And I also advocate for students at the state and local level in right call, and I'm a general nuisance to our legislators. Next slide.
Excuse me, Dr. O'Brien. I'm just wondering, you've covered a lot of content. And before you, do we have any questions or comments on where we've been while it's fresh on people's minds? Yeah, Trustee Munson, please. Thank you.
That was nice. Thank you. I was gonna wait till the end, but I was just wondering--
It's hard to keep track of it all, so--
Yeah, there's a lot.
No, no, that's, I know. I was wondering, for the assessments, are sped teachers, are they qualified to do all of the assessments, or do we use outside organizations to help assess?
It really depends on what's being assessed. So for the vast majority, yes, they are qualified to do the assessments. They do it in conjunction with school psychologists. That's for most students when we're looking at learning disabilities, which is the primary one there. Other health impairment, some of the more common categories is school psychologists and our ed specialists. Does that answer your question?
Sometimes we do have to use that word.
Yes, so for example, if a student is being referred for hearing impairment, we might refer to an audiologist. For orthopedic impairment, we might refer to an orthopedic impairment specialist. Does that make sense? Okay.
Anyone else?
I have a question from the very beginning.
Ask them. Okay, let's pick up one.
Okay. Jeez. So I could, no, I'll wait to the end.
Okay, all right. Very good. Thank you. One, then, looking at the overview of the law and the money and the landscape, I'm wondering, do our colleagues running private schools or charter schools have these same requirements? I mean, I don't see in their financial reports anything comparable to what we're spending. So, I don't know. Sorry, not trying to trigger anybody here, but it seems like a systemic disparity from my point of view. Maybe I'm wrong. Can you educate us?
Private schools aren't required to provide anything.
So no requirements on private schools?
If they don't take public--
They can just say, I'm sorry--
If they don't take public funds.
I'm sorry, this is not a student we're equipped to serve. Good luck. Okay, so private schools are off the hook from this set of legal requirements.
If they take any public funds, they're required to provide 504 accommodations. Charter schools are required to serve students with disabilities. And how they serve students with disabilities varies depending on the charter school. And are they proportionately serving students the way our regular public schools? No, they are not.
Well, I guess, we have one charter school where the authorizer of it gives us questions for their annual report and their upcoming renewal application. You know, are you spending 18% of your unrestricted funds to support these students? Okay, thank you.
Okay.
I do--
Please.
Yeah, thank you for that. So I--
Was, I'm blown away. First of all, I just want to say I was overwhelmed at the sight of 80 slides, but you all are doing such an amazing job retaining my attention, and I have ADHD. Hey! So thank you for that.
That's my unique ability.
Yeah, that's our superpower. I, just the last few slides, breaking it down, the comparison between all of our students and then, you know, the nonduplicate sped students. Are there plans to post this? I think that this is valuable information that maybe the public just is not aware of, especially the fiscal portion of it. Is there plans to publish this or make it like bite-sized, put it out on our website? How do you get this information out to the public aside from board meetings? Like, something like this? Like, what do you want everyone to know? I've worked in education for almost 20 years, and I did not, I'm blown away right now. So I think the amount of overwhelm, right?
It's a lot of information, and it's a lot to take in. I think people are surprised. This is the second year I've given that particular slide, and each time, people seem shocked by it.
The staff who serve and support our students is just like, wow. Wow, I did not know we had 54 sped teachers.
Yeah, and we are, like I said, about 13% of our students with disabilities. The state is getting close to 15%. And so we're not underserving our students. We're being really careful about how we do our eligibility. And I'll talk about that in a little bit, but we're thinking, we're doing a lot of professional development and ensuring that students with disabilities are the only ones who go into special ed.
Okay. See, Trustee Altman has a question?
Yeah, first, a statement. I used to have an assistant principal who would kind of glower at me almost every day saying, "Why is it that you have 10% of the students, and it's taking up 90% of my time?" And my response was always, "It's all of our students, and we're educating all of our students." And I think I'll stop there for now.
Fair enough. All right, please, Dr. O'Brien, continue.
All right. So, next slide. What are some things that we've done in the last few years? Well, this year, we partnered with Catalyst and started an inclusion preschool. So we're really excited about that. We have, you'll hear more about the Inclusion Roadmap Committee in a little bit, but it's an effort to really begin to define what inclusion looks like in Morgan Hill. We did professional development for three school sites on universal design for learning and co-teaching. They got specific coaching after their training so that they continued to be able to do what they learned in their classes. We have done a significant reduction in our out-of-district placements. We had 73 students in 2018, and we now have 25 students. And we continue to bring students back into the district so they can go to school in their neighborhood. We are leading the SELPA for Augmentative and Alternative Communication. So we're partnering with the SELPA and providing means of communication, alternative communication for students who can't, who are nonverbal or are unable to verbalize their needs. And so we are helping lead an initiative for training staff on that. We have increased the percentage of students in general ed for more than 80% of their day each year for the last four years. We continue to provide professional development for our paraprofessionals. Right now, we provide a lot of voluntary professional development, and our paraprofessionals are very interested in being involved in that because this is something they want. And we also have a lot of coaching on the job. There's the Teacher Apprenticeship Program, which we heard from already, and we'll hear a little bit more about. It's really exciting. And we are training our speech therapists and our school psychologists in appropriate assessments for English learners. So we are ensuring that students who are English learners aren't accidentally mis-evaluated and found to be eligible for special education when, in fact, they do not have a learning disability. We are taking a whole-child approach to discipline. So if a student is up for discipline, then the administrators take a closer look at the student and try to evaluate what is behind it and find alternative means of addressing it. And we have lesson preps for our statewide assessments. So students, before they went into the statewide testing, they got to practice their accommodations and modifications. So that was not new for them this year. We started a parent program, established the Navigating Educational Supports Together, which is a parent-driven program. And they meet with me quarterly, and Trustee Altman attends those. We adopted curriculum for our extensive support classes. We have a job skills lab at the post-secondary level. And we're implementing a curriculum for social skills and social science using Legos. All right, I'm going to introduce our workability. Heather DeRosa, she's our coordinator of workability. Go ahead, Heather.
Good evening. I am very excited to speak to you guys tonight. I've been with the district for two years, so this is my first opportunity to officially come forward and share with you about this program. And workability has actually been with the district since the '90s, so it's been around for a while. My name is Heather DeRosa. I am the career job training coordinator, and along with my coworker, Kelly Gomez, she serves as job developer for the program. So you have a very fancy definition up on the screen of what the program is, but what I like to share with students and with families is that picture it like this. It is two trains that carry money, okay? And they travel on the same track, and that track is vocational skills. I don't care which train you get on, I just want you to get on a train, because that train is going somewhere, and that is your future. What do you want your future to be from a vocational perspective? And does it require college? Does it just require a job? Does it just require just going in and building those career skills that you need? So these are some of the services that we provide through a workability grant and through the contract that we have through the Department of Rehabilitation. And our program is the Transition Partnership Program with them. Next slide, please. Some of the focus that I have spent on has been with connections and collaboration, starting especially with Morgan Hill Unified School District. We have amazing employees here in this district that we have been able to connect with that have gone out of their ways to support our students, including shout-out to food service and our maintenance department, who do amazing work with our post-secondary program, as well as our students who have intensive needs. They work in the food service kitchens, as well as in the farm tech program. One of the other things that we've done is we've really wanted to expand it opportunities for our students with more field trips. And so we've increased field trips from three that we took last year to seven this year. I have great plans to have students come here next year to tour the district office and see the business of education. So many students just think that school is their teacher, their principal, yard duty, or something of that nature. Bless you. And it is so much more than that, right? We have human resources. We have accounting, and these are all jobs that run not only our schools but our community. And it's a great opportunity for students to come in an environment that they're already comfortable and feel safe in, but learn the other aspects that are part of this program. One of the other great accomplishments that we had last year was we had a transition fair. And this is an accomplishment for workability or TPP, but it's for our district and for our community, because we had 14 different vendors that came out and shared opportunities with families and students of what is out there, especially for those of us who have students who are leaving high school because they're graduating or because they're promoting out, getting a certificate of completion. And you get so focused on crossing that finish line that you forget that there's still more supports. There's still more resources out there, and we want to connect them with that. Next slide, please. So some additional highlights that we have is that we do have the implementation of our new Pathful Explore curriculum. This curriculum has been purchased in partnership with our wonderful CTE program. Thank you. And it is a program that while I will be predominantly focusing on using this with students in my program, it is available to all students at a secondary level and has been set up at that, and I will be able to speak with our secondary administrators about this program as a resource for them if they wish to use it for all students. The other thing that I want to share is that obviously our focus is on the work aspect, the vocational aspect for our students. And we have 42 students that currently have been placed into employment, whether subsidized or unsubsidized, just within our program. You saw some numbers earlier that talked about how many students we have in special education at the secondary level. It's approximately 366. Workability has us serving 148, and of those, 86 of those are in our TPP program. And so we want to get work for those students. And so being able to have 42 students out there, and there's probably even more, working is great numbers that we have. So we also are going to be updating our website so that all of this great information is out there and available to families and students, as well as having an increased presence on Parents Square with our families.
Okay. So let's talk a little bit about why inclusion is important for our students with disabilities. You remember Dr. Jimenez talking about the outcomes for our students with disabilities? They aren't good. So what does the research say about students with disabilities who are in inclusive environments? We have a huge body of research, years of longitudinal studies, a ton of research that shows that inclusive settings benefit students with disabilities. When you study rhetoric, the first thing they tell you is, "Nobody cares about the research, so don't talk about it." But we're an educational institution, so I am going to talk about it. So what happens for students with disabilities in a general ed program? Their math and reading skills increase. Their communication increases. They apply new skills in diverse contexts, and they're able to generalize things more, and they have a wider range of abilities when they do that. They make meaningful relationships. They attend more social activities, and this leads to greater self-esteem, self-worth, competence. And when you're confident, you're motivated. You're motivated to be better prepared for post-secondary education, for job readiness skills. And when I say post-secondary education, I'm not just talking about the students who have a minor learning disability or a speech impediment. I'm talking about students with significant cognitive delays. They are going to university in California now. We have a first graduating class of students with significant cognitive delays graduating from UC Davis this year. So it is important that they, that all students be in inclusive environments. So when you have a job that you care about and you get to go to a higher institution of learning, you have a more fulfilling and positive outlook on life, and it leads to better outcomes, and it lowers some of those statistics that we talked about earlier. Okay, so what does it do for students? Next slide. What does it do for our general education students? Well, when you differentiate instruction for students with disabilities, you didn't get to see the 7-10 split, but basically, you're meeting the needs of all the students. So you have students who can learn more and students who can relearn some things that they need to learn. That leads to greater, students have more agency in their learning, and they have more engagement. They have diverse perspectives, critical thinking skills, and they're able to examine their own beliefs. They have positive relationships. This increases their accepting environments and reduces stigma. This also increases communities that are accepting, leads to more empathy, and it promotes collaborative and teamwork. And when you work with a diverse group of kids, you have to develop greater critical thinking skills. So that helps you create a greater appreciation of the diverse human experience and prepares you for a global workforce. If you remember what our vision statement is, it is about critical thinking and problem-solving and a diverse global society making meaningful contributions to society. So inclusive environments help all students. Before I turn this over to Julie, again, we have a few voices from our community about inclusion. So if I may, Trustee Andrade, can you read the quote from the teacher?
I, I, yes, I will. As soon as this turns on.
Issues, all right, Derek. "I love the collaboration between special education and general education staff at my school site. I am so heartened when I see diverse learners volunteering to read Shakespeare out loud." And this was from a special education inclusion teacher.
Trustee Altman, can you read the quote from the full inclusion administrator in Morgan Hill?
"Our training has increased our staff's capacity to implement guidelines from UDL framework. Staff have had the opportunity to learn from each other, which has impacted implementation at each grade level in a positive way."
Trustee Northwood.
"As a parent of a child with special support needs and learning differences, there's no greater value than inclusion and acceptance. The practice of inclusion and acceptance have major impact on our children's social-emotional development, as well as have a great impact on their ability to learn."
And Trustee Horner.
"I don't want to shame anyone for making bad decisions. I'm here to invite you into possibility, because I've seen what happens when we get this right. I've seen my child come home smiling because they were chosen for a group project or invited to your birthday party or called a friend. Every child deserves this. Don't be part of the change, Morgan Hill Unified. Be the change." From a Morgan Hill community member.
That's a community member with adult children.
All right, I'm back to talk about systems, and anyone who knows me knows I love systems. That's why she's laughing. So we have one system, and we should have one goal, and that's success for all of our students. And in the image, you can see all of the different staff members and family members who work together to support a single student. And the support team may look different depending on the needs of the students, but at the end of the day, we're all one team and one system working together to support our students. Next slide, please. So as I mentioned at the beginning, we've been really intentional and purposeful about realigning our systems at the central level to make sure that we're modeling in our LCAP that students with disabilities are included in the overall goal. We're collaborating with the-- a lot of these organizations are changing their names. The Inclusion Innovations Collaborative to provide specialized training and support for our site-- to provide specialized training and support for our sites that are leading the way with fully inclusive classrooms. And we're also collaborating with Supporting Innovative Practices to participate in grant-funded support in establishing and supporting our Inclusion Roadmap Committee. Next slide, please. So a little bit about Supporting Innovative Practices. They are an organization that works with the state, and typically districts work with them because they have to. They've been identified by the state as not adequately supporting their students with disabilities, and the state tells the district, "You will work with them because you need to change what you're doing." We actively went and sought them out. We said, "We want to partner with you. We want to get better. We want to learn what are the systems and things that can be put in place to help us be more inclusive so that we're supporting all of our students." And we're so excited about the partnership. Next slide, please. So they are helping us with this Inclusion Roadmap Committee, and we have representation from different educational partner groups. And so far, the committee was originally supposed to meet one time in the spring, and the committee was so excited about the work, they requested an additional meeting day. And the team worked together on identifying what is our definition of inclusion in Morgan Hill, and how do we want to start thinking about what inclusion looks like? And everyone who was there was really passionate, and I mean, people rarely ask for additional meetings, so you can tell how excited they were. And so that team will continue meeting into the next school year. All right, and I will transition over to Assistant Superintendent Tovars.
Hello, everyone. So here's where HR comes in. We are so excited. We are partnering with the County Office of Education and our union partners to create a program through the California Apprenticeship Institute. And those folks are supporting us with designing a program that will reach out to our current paraprofessionals and encourage them to become teachers. And how might that happen? What do you think might happen? Well, these folks that are current paraprofessionals will have the opportunity to go through a program to get their AA degree, or if they already have their AA degree, to get their bachelor's degree. And then that pathway will build into getting an actual credential that is good in the state of California to teach special education. And so we are, this is in its infancy right now, but we are very excited that it's coming to fruition. Next slide. So these folks are going to be very well-prepared teachers. We will have diverse candidates, diverse candidates from our community. Forty-seven of our 98 paraprofessionals live here in Morgan Hill. And so if we can, we can target folks that live here in Morgan Hill that represent our students and give them the training that they need with the amazing teachers that we have in our classrooms, it will be super powerful. This program is grant-funded. It is not going to cost the district much money, if any money. Like I said, it's in its infancy right now. And another key is that they're going to get on-the-job training. So they'll be earning their paraprofessional salary and be working towards their AA or BA or credential simultaneously, depending on where they are in the progression. Next slide, please. All right, so recruitment. Ooh, can we go back one? Okay, interesting. So, sorry, it's a little different than what I had. Okay. We will be recruiting, like I said, from our community. We're also going to be recruiting brand-new paraprofessionals into this program. So as we find people in the community that want to be paraprofessionals, they want to be special ed teachers, we're going to be out there in the community recruiting them. They're going to test with us. They're going to be interviewed and selected, and then they can become part of this program as it rolls out. So it has a bigger scope that's going to be coming about. Let's go to the next slide. So this program is going to be free or low-cost for the individuals going through it. And so we're going to help people access education that they may not have normally been able to access due to either lack of funding or lack of opportunity. So we'll be partnering with Gavlin and with West Valley to provide education from two different parts of our county so that our paraprofessionals that even live in the South San Francisco, or San Jose area will have a college that will be near them. The first four classes, though, we're going to try very hard to have here. West Valley does have a professor that lives in our Morgan Hill community, so it'll be really nice if we can have the classes at our district office or at one of our school sites. That would be really convenient for people and hopefully really hook people in and give them a good basis, a good start to the program. And also, while they're going to school, they are going to get the opportunity with their teacher that they're assigned to to practice lesson planning, setting goals, writing IEPs, helping to conduct IEPs, all those really important pieces of becoming an effective special education teacher. Next slide. So these are, these are the requirements that are set by the residency program. These are not district nor county set requirements, and so this is just to be aware of. These are the pieces that every resident will get slash adhere to. Next slide. So our design team decided to offer some information sessions for people. You know, obviously, I keep saying this is in its infancy. We're still doing a lot of the planning, but we want to make sure that people are aware that we are putting together this program. So we have four sessions coming up. Three of them are in person. One is virtual. We have sessions on the 21st, the 22nd, and the 27th of May. And all, everybody in this room should have a flyer, so please tell a friend, scan it to people, send it out, get people excited. We'd like to have a lot of people at our sessions asking questions and hopefully generate some interest for folks. Okay, next slide, please. So 30 states have apprenticeship programs right now. California has three counties that have an apprenticeship program. So they are Tulare County, San Diego County, and our very own Santa Clara County. So we are the first district in Santa Clara County to partake in this amazing, exciting venture to build our pathway from paraprofessional to credentialed special ed teacher. I'm excited about what's to come. You heard from Cheryl earlier. She's very excited about what's to come. Together, we're going to work to make sure that not only we build this pipeline, but we build a pipeline that's going to last. It's going to grow, and it's going to last for our district. And we're going to set a standard in Santa Clara County. So with that, if anybody has any questions, please let me know. Otherwise, I'll step to the side.
Anyone? Well, in this section. Trustee Altman, please.
This sounds like a phenomenal opportunity, and as I'm thinking of all of the teachers I know who came through as PIPs or interns, like Coordinator Melville, and Raven Jackson was a PIP when I first met her, which means they didn't have any credential. It sounds like a fantastic program, but I'm wondering what will keep the brand-new teachers here after they go through the program?
Well, what we're hoping is that they build the most wonderful relationships with their mentor teachers, and that that will be a help. They will learn the process, the program, the offerings of the district, and that will be a help. And they will feel a sense of community, belonging, self-worth, and I guess accomplishment for being part of this program, that they will stay. If we build a good place, they will stay.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you for the question. Thank you all.
Hold on, hold on. I'm back to checking everybody first before I get in. First, I want to say thank, I'm so excited. This, you know, I've had thoughts and conversations about Grow Your Own programs and something along this line for a long time. Dr. Garcia and I talked to somebody from the state, I think, two years ago about this, this general topic of how do we, how do we build something that you all turned in to this. So it's just, it's very exciting to, to see where we're going. And, you know, I, you know, I hope for a while it's a competitive advantage, and I hope also that all the districts around us go, hey, we need to do that as well, because this is a wonderful way of, we have people here that need to earn more money, and we have higher skilled, higher paying jobs that we need to fill. So the solution to two different sets of needs can happen, in some cases, with some of the exact people with the training and support that, you know, you and the rest of this network are putting together. So I just, I just want to say bravo. This is, this is, I wanted to just like burst into a round of applause, but I don't think I'm supposed to do that here. I'm, I'm very excited about this work and the possibility, and thank you for doing it and sharing it with us.
You are very welcome, and it's very much a team effort with these fine folks.
Okay, I think we're down to the last two slides. Is that you, or?
Nope, I'm off. Thank you.
Enjoy. On my little, my goal was, was at the end of the night, to sit down and put my feet up and take my shoes off. So hopefully we'll all get there soon.
Yeah, that's what we're working for. First, first meeting, then feet up. And to, I collaborated with Dr. O'Brien to Trustee Altman's question. They do sign a commitment to stay with the district for a certain amount of time.
I've read that hope is not a strategy, and that's why I was kind of smiling. That had been Dr. Garcia's tagline for a year or two. So I always get a little nervous when someone says "I hope" first, and...
Yeah, there's, there's paper involved.
Hope but verify, is that?
Yeah, trust, trust but verify. So here's our hopes for the next school year. These are some of the plans that we've made. We are going to engage in leadership training for our principals, assistant principals, and district leadership around supporting inclusive practices before the school starts. And then also, actually, at the end of this year, and the beginning of next year, and through the whole year, we'll be providing training for administrators on the Universal Design for Learning. For the August and October PD days, we will be doing district-wide training on Universal Design for Learning. We are going to continue with our focus on student engagement, because that is our number-one priority, is making sure that our students are engaged and able to access instruction. And then we are also going to continue our focus on expanding access for all through intentional language supports, so that we're meeting the needs of our students with disabilities and also the needs of our English learners. Next slide, please. So coming soon, aligned professional development. Our through-line is inclusion and equity. So as I mentioned, we're going to continue and level up our investment in Universal Design for Learning. We are going to focus on integration and alignment across all of our initiatives under the umbrella of student engagement. We are going to address and challenge some exclusionary practices. As Dr. O'Brien mentioned, we are working on having our students spend more time in the general education setting. And how can we provide training and supports to have more of that happening in our spaces? We are working to support climate and culture goals by working with student services around positive behavior supports and interventions. And what does that look like when we're talking about including our students with disabilities in general education? And also, we will be working with our board-certified behavior analysts to provide professional development for administrators, focused on the whole child systems, like Dr. O'Brien was mentioning, around how do we consider other means of correction and support when students are struggling to be successful in the general education setting. Next slide, please.
Okay, you heard a lot about special education, inclusion, and where the district has been and where they're going. When you walked in, you grabbed a quote that resonated with you. Take a moment for a final reflection. Tell us which quote resonated with you most and why. What connections did you make to your own experiences? What ideas or insights surfaced for you during this presentation? And how has your thinking shifted, if it has in any way, as a result of the information that you now know?
Want to go first?
You can also talk to each other first, if you'd like.
No, we don't like to do that.
We don't want to do a think pair show.
That was my overactive sense of humor. That's one of my things I need accommodation for, sorry.
I'll start.
People, we'll just share out.
Okay, I selected this quote on the table. It says, "I don't have a disability. I have a gift. Others may see it as a disability, but I see it as a challenge. This challenge is a gift because I have to become stronger to get around it and smarter to figure out how to use it. Others should be so lucky," by Shane Bryan. I selected this because I have ADHD. It's my superpower, and I don't care what anybody says. I think it helps me generate ideas, hyper-focus, and multitask. But I've also learned to understand it because either I'm doing, going 120 miles an hour, or I'm crashing out, as Gen Alpha says, and doing nothing. So yeah, I selected that, and yeah.
Anyone else? Go ahead, please.
The one I chose was, "Inclusion is not a strategy to help people fit into the systems and structures. It is about transforming these, those systems and structures to make it better for everyone." I didn't know what, what this meant when I chose it until I heard this presentation, and I think this presentation just covers everything. It's not, they don't, they shouldn't fit into society. We should, what you're doing, what you're all doing is helping to help them, society fit for them. So I congratulate you. I think it's wonderful. So that's why I did it.
The quote that I chose is, "Early segregation does not merely predict later segregation. It almost ensures it." And it's really simple, but I also feel like it's, the morality of like separating people who are different is really, it's clearly wrong, you know? And disability is like a, almost often, or it's often forgotten about, is when we think about marginalized people. So I really appreciate your presentation and the work that you guys do. And yeah, thanks so much.
Thank you. Trustee Altman, please.
People are, people with disabilities are not broken. We are not problems to be solved. We are not pity stories. We are not brave. We are not inspirational. We are people. And that is still a young, Nancy Altman's quote is, "It's not an encroachment on general funds. It's a moral imperative." It is our kids. And I'm going to also jump in. I realize I'm probably the oldest person in here, and I've been around a long time. And back in 1998, when I started teaching and I had to cover homework lab at Britton, which I hated doing, I found out that even though I taught the SD which I hated doing, I found out that even though I taught the SDC class, and, you know, terms change, but this was the students who were not reading at third grade level when they were in seventh grade, and the students who couldn't multiply. And I'd go into the homework lab with Gen Ed kids, and a lot of the students were right there with my students, but they hadn't been identified. So UDL, it's going to help an awful lot of students. A DNQ, did you put DNQ in your list?
It's not in the act.
It's one we know and love, does not qualify. For students who don't qualify for services, for many reasons, they might still have the same needs. And so, UDL, MTSS, I think that's how we get out of this special ed financial stress, is by keeping kids out and keeping the labels off, giving everyone what they need when they need it, rather than waiting until they've had three years to fail. I'm off my soapbox now.
It's, it's a great soapbox. No need, yeah, I'll read one, just want to follow up. I've often wondered, as we have these conversations, gee, could we have a world where every student had an individualized education plan? I mean, that's not how the law and how the structure and how the terminology goes, but isn't that actually our goal? With each one of these 8,000 students, where are you? What's going on? What's next? I mean, in, in human terms, not bureaucrat terms, that's an individualized education plan. So that would be kind of the ultimate expression, I think, of what Trustee Altman's talking to. If we, if we could systemically get there and, you know, we have to operate inside a set of laws and rules that others have decided, various legislatures have written and signed off and like, oh, that'll do it. And like, wow, here we are. But, but, so anyhow. But so the one I picked up is, "Disability is not a brave struggle or courage in the face of adversity. Disability is an art." It is "An Ingenious Way to Live" by Neil Marcus Hector and playwright. And I thought what Student Board Member Fruchy was saying about, you know, the, you know, over-the-top support, you know, yourself, you know? And, and so that's part of my just personal reflection in all of this work around this is like, people are people, and we all need our individualized plans, so everybody needs something different. Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, what's next?
No more, no more terms.
Check your visual schedules.
Yes, we gave you some tools. Right, whether you need to, so.
You had a bunch of questions, Trustee Andrade.
I did have a bunch of questions, but I was erasing as they were answered.
Oh, good.
So I just, I just have one question and then maybe like just a few comments. So I really love the 7-10 split video. I actually saw that when I was completing my master's program back in 2015. And I still use that whole metaphor today to explain education to people. And so, it was like, great to see it. And one of the things, again, and I remember in 2021, when I was still working for the district, I remember going to a PD that was all about UDL, but my question is, how can we embed this, right? So it's vision, mission statements, PD, that's all great, but like, making, maybe eventually making a plan to where we're doing instructional rounds and we're walking in, okay, I see that graphic organizer. Okay, yeah, I see this broken down. I see visual, I see closed captioning, all of that. And I, and I mentioned this to, you know, Jim earlier, you know, embedding maybe later on down the road, that, to ensure that we're all on the same page and we know what this looks like. So that was kind of just a comment. And then the second thing is, I found out during the presentation, Google Classroom has accessibility checker. Oh, okay. You talked about targeted, targeted tier two, and I immediately thought about tests in classrooms. And so my question is just, and this is a rhetorical question, but we always get like extra time on tests, right? That's always an accommodation, extra time, extra time. Why do we still test for memorization? Because I can't think of a job, like even engineers don't sit in their cubicle going, oh my God, I can't, I can't think about this, I have to memorize it, I can't look at my notes, I can't look at my book, right? So like, why do we still do that? So maybe just, just little things like that. When I think of UDL, I think of that, right? Like just testing and how we, how we, how we, how we design our lessons and assessments and so, that is it. Oh, last comment, I'm sorry. The ERWC program that we're piloting at the high schools for English has a lot of these supports embedded in it. When I taught this curriculum 10 years ago, it's all there, has English language supports, graphic organizers deluxe. So I'm happy to see that we are finally joining all the other districts and bringing ERWC to a secondary, so that's it.
Yeah, I think that, I'm just going to respond a little bit, because I do think that you've sort of nailed, right? The, the UDL is like the umbrella of the way that we think about designing the spaces, right? And part of what we discussed today are some of the things that we're doing, both at the tiered intervention and that dovetailing that we have to say, right? So right now, our focus is like on the five dimensions of teaching and learning, and that particular area that we're looking purposely is student engagement. And that means all of the ways that we set the table for students. So if you're doing constructing meaning, right, which I mentioned, the first module of our, the first area that you look at is, how am I backwards planning to set the stage for my students? What are the language demands and the concept demands, right, of this lesson? But it dovetails really nicely with, right, UDL and that design for engagement. That literally is the first module of UDL, right? So I think that what you have in this wonderful team that presented for you tonight and other people that couldn't be here, is that's kind of system thinking, that we don't want to reinvent the wheel, but how do we align our systems and our practices so that there is, I was going to say that, everybody rowing in the same direction without adding one more thing. You're doing this strategy, but let's talk to you about that. That strategy is really a UDL strategy, right? And so, thank you so much for highlighting that, because I think that that's what we were trying to do with the, the hourglass, right? Sort of like that big picture and how does that work when you go all the way to the classroom?
Well, and I think too, just back, but Trustee Altman was saying earlier, is like, when we do these things, it's not one extra thing. It's like you're really teaching the whole child, your, your instruction is better. And I'll say that if you send the video out, because it really is impactful, because it changed my teaching, to the point where at Gavlin College and now AEC automatically just enrolls students into my class. And it's funny because they're like, I have accommodations. And they're like, don't worry, she already embeds all the accommodations for students regardless. And so I think that if we get to that point where if this is how instruction is, we don't necessarily need to make those accommodations anymore.
Right, it's part of the way we do systems and the way we deliver business and instruction to all of our students. Right? Yeah, thank you so much. Well, before, I don't know if there's any other questions.
Trustee Munson, please.
Not a question, just amazing. I thought your guys' presentation was very thorough, detailed, and educational, and you guys just hit it right down the line, so good job.
One, one quick, quick follow-on, thank you to Trustee Andrade. So you took me all the way back to 16, I'm in my first day of, well, we called honors physics, AP physics now, in, in my high school, and Mr. Adams was a teacher. And he said, okay, first thing I want to tell all you kids is, all the, all the tests will be open note, open book, you can bring anything you want except an advisor. We were like, yes! He said, these are going to be the hardest tests you ever take, because I'm going to put like a lot of information on there that you don't need to solve the particular problem. And I'm going to test whether you actually understand the subject and can apply that understanding. I don't care if you remember Bx plus Cy, it's like, and, and if you use the equations enough, you'll remember them, but, but I am going to test if you know which ones to use. And, and I've just never forgotten that, and I like, and I was very disappointed in a lot of other teachers after that. It's like, didn't you listen to Mr. Adams? But anyhow, he just brought me back with that, you know, it's about applying knowledge, not stuffing our heads full of things.
And when we think about AI?
That was my line, I was...
Sorry. Okay, go.
Point of order, Trustee Altman.
She stole, well, no, so when we moved to California and my son was in fifth grade and he did a Washington State report, he went online, this was a long time ago, no one went online except for my kid. And it was a dial-up modem, no kidding. And he searched Washington State reports, the state of Washington produced a state report. Everything, if you're doing a state report, it had the state bird, the map of the state, everything that goes in a state report. He prints it off, he turns it in, and he gets a B. It hit every, everything the teacher had asked for. And she didn't know how to grade it, you know, things are, and I said, look, things are changing, you have to change your assignment, because if you're just testing someone for their ability to find information, it, you got to change. And that's where, as we come into AI now, why, why bother memorizing anything? We need to know application, which as those of us who are educators know, that's a much higher-order skill. And so we're actually, the demands for students in school is going to be increasing greatly because some kids can memorize things, but we're going to be, keep asking for more.
Those critical thinking and connections, right? Yeah, absolutely.
So if you're out there, Mr. Adams, I'm grateful, thank you.
Well, before, before we finish, I just want to extend my deep gratitude for all the people who worked on tonight's presentation, the amazing work that the team has done, right? Nobody does this job alone, we have amazing, you saw the slide of all these folks who contribute day in and out to provide the best for our students. So thank you, thank you so much for letting us present tonight.
Wonderful, thank you. Okay, next slide, any board member reports? I see at least one. Go ahead, please.
I have the stickers, if anyone wants one.
Oh, yeah.
I love Morgan Hill Public Schools.
Great. Trustee Altman.
I'll share this one with you, Trustee Andrade, but I went to the city school district meeting last week, and it really, I was pretty excited that with the Economic Mobility Advancement Center and having free classes in Spanish and in English for people looking to go into business or how to expand business, which includes classes, a series of classes that are four to 10 weeks, and these classes will be held at our Adult Ed Center. There will be workshops, so like one-shot deals on how to develop specific skills needed for a business, and, and then one-on-one consulting, which is free, so the opportunity for economic growth. And these are things, you know, our graduates, recent graduates can tap into, for those who, ambitious kids who want to just start off with a company. And then the, one other thing that really applied for us, I felt, is there's going to be a teen police academy for the day during the summer that the police department staff is putting together. The police department's going to have a new driver program, I had Sobrato put on by the school resource officer, and there's a half a million dollar grant for traffic safety, and they're looking at bringing back every 15 minutes programs to the high schools, which is very grim, but very impactful. And there were 13 youth referrals to the youth diversion program this year, so the partnership is thriving and good things for our community and our students.
Anything you want to add? Yeah, excellent. I'll report on a few things, and on May 12th, the Eastside Union Foundation, which is the foundation associated with Eastside Union High School District, had a panel discussion entitled, "Are We Failing Our Boys?" And it was specifically about educational attainment and other social indicators for young boys and young men. And by the panel were men and women, real experts in this field, professors, counselors, and the bottom line was statistically, yes. I was, heard from, you know, Gavlin Trustee recently, very common statistic, 45% of our community college students are male, 55% female, that's a 10% gap. And why, why should we care? I mean, and I guess for me, you know, I think of my mother and my grandmother and my sisters, how overtly they were discriminated against educationally. So that is and was, and still is a very real thing, so the effort to address that is absolutely necessary. But we also, for all of us, whether we happen to be male, female, or identify otherwise, we need all of our young people growing up and fulfilling their potential and their dreams, and we can't leave anybody behind. And when you look at our data, one of the professors said, you know, when we talk about gender studies at any level, we're actually talking about women's. We don't talk much in gender studies about the social roles of boys and men, or educational, or all these, these various other aspects. And it's, it's really important, if you look at, most people think teen suicide is primarily a female thing. It's now actually more young men are taking their lives. Not, and again, it's not like I don't want to do something about young women taking their lives, that's not the point. And it's hard to talk about, particularly as a guy, because people think, well, don't you care? It's like, no, I understand, but this was a really important, it was a two-hour panel discussion, it didn't have a lot of, you know, now go do this, except pay attention. When you look at your data, when you look at educational attainment, when you disaggregate, look at that as well, and particularly disaggregate for our brown and black boys. That's where the statistics are most troubling. And, but right behind is a lot, you know, I think in my own family, I think of the kids that went off the rails to drug addiction, the kids that went off the rails and multiple, you know, young men from middle-class, professional, college-educated families, many are getting lost, you know? And then there's a whole lot of different causes, and, but, but really, the, the main takeaway was, pay attention. Think about this as you're looking at your information, looking at your data, and we need, we need, we need everyone to be part of a healthy society, and we need, particularly for, for our boys and young men, a model, a positive model of what does it mean? You know, it doesn't, you know, mean big and tough and beat up on anybody, but maybe it does mean whoever you are, if there's somebody being harmed, it's your job to be, to provide support and protection. And it's, it's quite an interesting conversation, you know, it's not something to be solved in a moment, but I'm, I'm really glad that I got to be there to think about that. And I think as we look at our data, it's something we have to continue to be mindful of as well. And then the next morning, I was here for the roundtable, which was amazing, or I guess, I didn't make the evening one, because I was somewhere else the night before, but just hearing from all of our various school sites, what had been done, and what's being done, fundraising, activities, you know, they're like, wow, so much cool stuff going on in elementary schools. And also thinking for, as we continue nurturing our district-wide foundation, wondering, how can that foundation provide support to these efforts without in any way interfering? And so we started having conversations, what might that look like to further augment those efforts? And I guess the last thing I'll report on, why I'm so tired, today, once a year, State Senator Cortezi has a bus trip for education, he's been doing this for 22 years, to Sacramento. Today, there were four buses, a few of us, including myself, went by car so we could get back earlier, but really around, you know, education policy and law and, and funding, and I've heard from a lot of different senators and assembly members, and of course, you know, it's now the reaction to a response to the governor's "May revise," which, as they got out their crystal ball, they said, oh, no, it's not a $6 billion surplus, it's a $12 billion loss because of how we think tariffs and other actions will impact us. Truth is, nobody knows, so everybody is guessing as well as they can, but very much in a, in a, you know, compared to just a few weeks ago, the state said, oh, oh, cutback mode, so what is, what does that mean? Everyone is saying, well, we don't want to take it out of K-12, but a little here, a little there, so a huge, huge effort to try. And unfortunately, we're, we're on defense in terms of defending what we can of the funding we need for our schools and kids, but it's, it's, it's a tough, tough slog. And the, the proposed hits to our universities are even higher, the governor came out with an 8% proposed cut to CSU's and UC's, which now has been revised to 3%, a 60% reduction in the middle-class scholarship fund. in the middle-class scholarship fund, which is, so, so, you know, further affordability crisis for our students going on to college. But so it's, it's kind of, I like to be Mr. Positive, but it was kind of grim. The only, the only good thing I can say about it compared to earlier times when the state has faced these crises is at least they're saying the right things about, we don't want to take it out of K-12. So we shall see, but a Medi-Cal, you know, we're, we're counting on Medi-Cal to hopefully help us with some of our mental health supports. A lot of things are under attack and, and our governor right now seems to be, I guess the kindest way to say is tacking towards the center politically is probably an accurate political assessment, but some of that means like, well, you know, why are we providing healthcare for people that don't have all their paperwork in place and then things that are, you know, quite different from what California policy and, and has been for some time. So I'm not sure who he's trying to make happy. Frankly, he's just making a lot of people mad. And if, if that's his presidential campaign strategy, I think it's a mistake, but that's, we don't do politics here, I'm sorry, I shouldn't have done that. But it's just, it's a weird time because of what he's doing has such an effect on, on, on our schools. So anyhow, that concludes my report. Any other board reports? Seeing and hearing none, I will adjourn us at 9:17 and thank everybody for their hard work and great conversation.